Let the record reflect, we have reconvened with all members present. As I ask you to rise for the pledge of allegiance, I will ask you remain standing afterwards for a few moments. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing. As we finish the pledge, we must remember that this past Friday was D-Day, so I'll be asking for a moment of silence for many today, but including those that gave their lives on that day for our country and for those of the members of the greatest generation we have lost since then. Also, I want to recognize and have you a moment of silence for Eugene Kopash, the father of our videographer, Robert, who died this past week, a Millburn teacher for 39 years. Also, yesterday in our partner community of Union Beach, they're still recovering from Superstorm Sandy, and I've lost a heroic volunteer yesterday, volunteer firefighter, Robert Meyer. Robert Meyer was among many firefighters fighting a four alarm fire that had engulfed a Union Beach business and lost his life. Also, Ben Cahill, longtime resident and dedicated volunteer, serving on multiple boards, the Board of the Adult School and also the Madison Area YMCA, longtime member of the Senior Advisory Committee and Downtown Development Committee. Ben's wife, Tati, died on May 23rd. Ben died five days later on May 28th. He lived in New Jersey for over half a century, but was forever the Southern Gentleman. In our last meeting, we sang "Happy Birthday" to Cora Jigetz in honor of her 108th birthday. I was able to present her with the proclamation at her party on May 31st. She walked out into her backyard to join the party with her walker. And then when someone had mentioned the Lord had a plan for the coming year, Cora responded, "The Lord better hurry up and tell me what that plan is." And Cora decided it was time for her to go see her Lord. So this past Thursday, Cora died. She was inspiration to us all and it touched so many lives in her 108 years. So again, please join me in a moment of silence for those from D-Day, Eugene Kopash, Ben and Tati, Cahill, and Cora Jigetz. We have no minutes for approval. We have a little short time in between meetings. We're going right to greetings. Welcome all. And again, I apologize for the temperature in here. We'll be fixed by our next meeting. Knock on wood. This past Saturday, we had the ribbon cutting for the paths at the 49 Acres. If you haven't had a chance, please go up and take a walk on those beautiful paths. That was a work culmination, almost a culmination, but there's still more work to be done. But a work of many, Eagle Scout Joseph Falco III, Troop 25 scouts, parents, West Point cadets, Shade Tree and Park Advisory Committee members, members of the Madison Presbyterian Church, the Land Conservancy of New Jersey worked with us in bringing in volunteers, and I thank Ostry for her work on that. And Bob Landrigan, your committee with the work on the pass of recreation and planning, putting all that together. The 49 Acres is something to be very proud of in Madison as you look at the turf fields, the community garden, and now the trails that we can hike. The employees for the month of June are Teresa Giordano and Jim Trimble for their work in reading electric and water meters and fulfilling customer responsibilities in the absence of Jay Healy. So we're keeping our billing and collections up to date because they're stepping it up. Anniversary, Vito Lupino from the Public Works Department, his 20th anniversary on June 28th. And I mentioned Union Beach before, for the second summer in a row, we have an effort to send Union Beach children off to camp to give them a sense of normalcy as their town still recovers. And in part of that, we have a fundraiser on June 30th from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. at the Madison Plaza Lanes with cooperation of our owners there. So $30 with all the proceeds going to the Summer Camp Initiative. You can have a great night of bowling and knowing that every pin you either miss or knock down, you're helping send a child to camp, someone that really needs it. So put that on your calendar. And let me come down below for a proclamation. Sandy, come on up, please. And Edna and Carmelo, why don't you come and join me here also? Proclamation honoring Dr. Sandra Filo. Whereas Dr. Sandy Filo is a board certified gerontological nurse who received her master's degree from New York University and her doctorate from Columbia University, and whereas Sandy has been a member since 2002 of the Borough... The good old Borough Roses here. Borough of Madison Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, whose purpose is to communicate senior-related needs such as recreation, transportation, housing, and medical care to the mayor and council. And whereas Sandy developed and directs the Stay Healthy Program, which started in Madison Senior Center on May 26, 2004. And whereas this program impacts the lives of our senior citizens in Madison by providing medical consultation, encouraging participation in health-related programs, and promoting a proactive stance on staying healthy. And whereas the Stay Healthy Program is designed to help elderly adjust to life with chronic diseases, inevitable changes associated with aging, while focusing on maintaining a healthy lifestyle. And whereas since inception, Dr. Sandra Filo has volunteered and counseled over 100 clients each year on health-related concerns and user-friendly housing. And whereas the Stay Healthy Program received the CVS National Council on Aging Prescription for Better Health and Wellness Award in 2008, recognized in the Senior Center for outstanding work in promoting a healthy lifestyle for seniors. And whereas in 2009, Dr. Sandra Filo was honored for her leadership in nursing education and healthcare by being inducted in Nursing Educational Alumni Association Hall of Fame at Teachers College Columbia University. Now therefore, I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby congratulate Dr. Sandra Filo on 10 successful years with Stay Healthy Program and extend thanks and appreciation for volunteer leadership to the program and to the Madison Senior Center. You have made a difference in so many lives. Thank you so much.
I thank everyone that's here. I especially am happy to see Woody here. Woody did this with me in 2004. He was behind it all the way. I think he probably was my best marketing person. And all of the very special people here, the Department of Health, the nurses in the Department of Health, my family, my synagogue friends, the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee. We're very, very happy that Edna is here. Edna has worked unbelievably with the Stay Healthy Program and has supported everything that I wanted to do. So thank you, everybody. Mayor.
Sandy, stay up here for a second. While we've got the camera rolling, and I think this is going to be a short tape night, so all the friends of Sandy that came out tonight, would you please come out up here and join her? Come on up. Come on up. All the mayor, Woody, everyone, please come on up and join Sandy for a second up here. Just the tip of the iceberg of the lives you have touched. Thank you, Sandy. The first receiving line of the council meetings.
A child. I think it might be her son's here.
Various school groups here, I often talk about volunteers and why we do it, the volunteers in front of the room and volunteers such as Sandy. And I say the payment comes in the love and appreciation you get for those you serve. And so I think we just paid Sandy a whole lot of overtime. So thank you so much for your work. And let's go to reports from committees. Health, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. The Health Department just wants to talk about two items that have been in the news lately. First, MERS or Middle East Respiratory Syndrome. What they want to tell everybody is that this is pretty very low risk to the general public, and there's a lot you could do to protect yourselves. In general, it's common sense things such as washing your hands and avoiding touching your face, you know, with unwashed hands, or if you've come in contact with anything like on a train or whatever. And, you know, just avoid close contact with people. And what they do say is do not change your travel plans. I know that it's been in the news a lot, but if you make common sense adjustments, you'll be fine. The other is measles, and the short answer to measles is vaccines. Make sure that everybody gets vaccinated against it. Low there, alrighty. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Engineering, Mr. Cattinello.
Thank you, Mayor. The 2014 Road Improvement Program Drainage Improvement Work on Academy Road is approximately 75% complete. Curbing replacement and trench repairs likely to continue through the end of this week. Once sidewalks are replaced for the entire development, the contractor will schedule the milling and repaving work. The Treadwell Pump Station, a gas main along Treadwell Ave to the sewer pump station for the emergency generators being installed by PSCNG and work is nearly complete. Topsoil and reseeding work will commence later this week. The Madison Public Library continues to make progress on a rooftop air conditioning replacement plan and is hoping to present a bid schedule in the next two weeks. Also, the Shade Tree Management Board would like me to ask residents who have new trees planted on their property, if they have the opportunity, please water them. It costs about $500 to replace a tree, and we believe that money would be better spent on buying new ones than replacing old ones. They would like me to pass that message along to developers as well, as they're developing property, to be mindful of the borough-owned trees and that they should be maintaining them while construction is commenced. And, you know, again, because we would much rather have the taxpayer money go toward the buying of new trees, buying and planting of new trees as opposed to replacing dead ones. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Utilities, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. Report from the Electric Department. They installed a new pole and a down guy at Woodland Road in Union Hill. They installed new secondary cable on Dogwood Road, and they continued system reinforcement on the main circuit. They've been working on James Park to remove the leaves and make that substantially cleaner. They installed a riser conduit and fuse discount for lamp posts in front of Enterprise Car Rental, which is very nice because they've continued the lamp posts all the way down to Enterprise. Installed downlight for parking panel behind the Public Safety Building, and they reconstructed a riser pole behind the Madison Public Library. And there was a replacement of a broken cutout box at the Madison Health Department Service Pole. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Bailey.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. From the Police Department. Last Friday, a group of council members and the police traffic unit met with the neighborhood near Prospect, Midwood, and Woodland to discuss options for making that intersection safer since we've just had two serious car accidents. The meeting was very productive, and we're already seeing some changes there. And certainly, the police have been out in full force to check speed limits and how things are going. So I know the neighbors appreciate, and I certainly do. Meanwhile, in the Police Department, officers responded to and investigated 40 motor vehicle crashes, conducted 633 motor vehicle stops, this is for the month of May, by the way, issued 352 summonses, made 18 arrests, and conducted 183 radar posts. Madison officers responded to 80 alarm activation conditions and conducted 1,202 premise checks, including daytime school checks, business checks, housing checks, critical infrastructure and train station checks. Officers investigated 14 abandoned 9/11 calls, checked on the welfare of citizens 15 times, assisted citizens 33 times, conducted MV lockout, motor vehicle lockouts 25 times, assisted disabled motors 17 times, investigated noise complaints 18 times, and investigated 26 animal complaints. The Madison officers during the month of May made 18 arrests, including seven warrants, two for controlled dangerous substances, three DWIs, one domestic incident, one shoplifting, one simple assault, one theft, and one violation of a final restraining order and one underage possession of alcohol. Meanwhile, they had time to train. So they... Various officers, one took a tactical pistol course, another took child passenger safety certification, various officers and command staff took a course in arrest, search, and seizure update. Several officers took a course in Paramus Mall shooting overview. The entire department did mandatory firearms qualification, and then the Patrol Division did an autism awareness training. The Auxiliary Police logged a total of 121 hours for the month of April. This is our volunteer police force, which consisted of their monthly meetings, trainings, and the Memorial Day Parade. And we want to welcome Auxiliary Police Officers Vargas and Stelgenz, they were just sworn in. And three of our Madison officers participated in the 2014 Unity Tour on May 9th. And Patrolman Kevin Boone celebrated his 30th anniversary with the Police Department. The Fire Department, theirs isn't as long. The following Madison probationary volunteer firefighters recently completed 171-hour firefighter one training course given at the Morris County Fire Training Academy. And this is just the first step for a volunteer firefighter. This included Mike Shagru, Joe Gilmore, Colin Dunn, and Pat DiBiase. We want to thank these volunteers for their dedication and their commitment to the Madison Fire Department and the town of Madison, and congratulations for a job well done. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Wilkowitz.
Thank you, Mayor. Applications for our recently introduced electric rebate program are currently available in Borough offices and also on Rosenet. The filing deadline for this program is September 1st. Between now and then, we'll have interns available in the clerk's office, who will not only be able to assist applicants in this program, but assist applicants who may be interested and eligible for a variety of programs available throughout the state. Just as an aside, now that people are stepping forward with some interest in this program, I'm hearing many stories about eligible people who are unaware of other programs. So if you know anyone who you believe would be eligible, please have them come to the Borough offices, particularly the clerk's office, and speak to them about these programs. All information remains confidential, so they needn't be concerned. The payments required under the Green Village Road School Redeveloper Agreement have been made, and although these may not be the most exciting thing to listen to, I find it rather fun to read out these numbers. They have paid a $1 million deposit, a $75,000 escrow, $296,000 in reimbursable costs, $14,200 in tax abatement application fee, and $17,000 per annual administrative fee. So I think we can conclude, they're serious. On May 31st, the Constellation Electric Purchase Contract expired, and on June 1st, new contracts with multiple providers went into effect without a glitch. I don't think anyone noticed their lights flicker, TV do anything weird. It was quite seamless. The pricing in our new program is much better than it had been in the past, and importantly, our risk to suppliers is diversified. We had one supplier before, now we have a whole list of them. As for the mayor's previous announcement, we are on track to have a serious discussion about rate review third quarter this year. By then, we will have some more months behind us in terms of our experience with these contracts, and we'll be certain as to how effective they've been in saving us money, and hopefully we can pass some of that on. Solar legislation that we have promoted has been released by committee by Senator Cody and will be scheduled for a vote in the State Senate. If passed, this legislation will expand the number of possible sites for a solar installation in Madison, which would reduce our demand for purchased energy and has favorable implications for what we pay for electric power. So electric power is a focus in many different ways. The expectation is that we will not only be able to do something beneficial about rates, but we'll be able to do something beneficial about ensuring future supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Affairs, Mr. Rowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Downtown Development Commission, the Madison Farmers Market opened last week. The DDC is still looking for assistance with their Buy Fresh, Give Fresh program. We welcome volunteers to help transport Farmers Market produce to Dover. If you would like to help, please contact Barbara Hughes at thefarmersmarket@rosenet.org. Bottle Hill Day is set for Saturday, September 27th. It's going to be in September this year. Vendor applications and sponsorship packets have been sent out and are now available on Rosenet. The Chamber of Commerce reports that the Chamber is celebrating the conclusion of their 2013-2014 fiscal year with its annual awards dinner tomorrow evening at the Wyndham Hamilton Park. All are welcome to attend, and admission is $50 a person. The Chamber will be recognizing business and individuals for business improvement, community service, and distinguished service. Longtime Madison businesses will be awarded historic business awards. Three graduating Madison High School students who are pursuing higher education and business will also be awarded Chamber scholarships. And Madison families that have been in business in town for at least 50 years will be recognized to help celebrate Madison's 125th anniversary. And finally, new board members and officers will be installed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Communications and petitions.
None received, Mayor.
This is the first of two invitations for discussion. This is limited to the things on our agenda discussion or resolutions that are on the consent agenda. And on our discussion include third quarter estimated tax bills, purchase of a vehicle for the Police Department, and a technology update. And then you saw the resolutions are posted. So anyone wishing to comment on any of those, please step to the lectern, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes less. Anyone wishing to be heard. Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, and we move on to our agenda discussions. Estimated third quarter estimated taxes. Robert.
I'm estimating that the levy for 2014 will be $60,863,000, of which the municipal and open space are as what was adopted of $13,637,000 and $617,000 for open space. The school is levy of $37,483,000. It's right from the A4F form that I discussed with Gary Lane. And I'm estimating the county taxes to increase by 1.42%, which is the amount of the increase, percentage increase in our ratables from 2013 to 2014. That totals the $60,863,000. That is an increase of $1,554,000 above 2013 levy, or 2.62%. Since the ratables increased from $3,382,000 to $3,430,000, or an increase of 1.42%, the tax rate goes down by that 1.42%. So instead of the levy, which is up 2.62%, the tax rate will go up 1.2%, or from $1.75.4 to $1.77.5. This is an increase of 2.1 cents. The 2.1 cents is derived from a half a cent decrease in the municipal rate, the county being flat, and the school going up 2.6 cents. The... If the state budget is late, the county cannot certify our tax rate, we cannot send out tax bills. I recommend we proceed with this practice over the last five years.
So we have a resolution that will move forward with estimated tax bills, and then we'll have any adjustments if necessary under the following. Any council discussion? Alright, thank you, Robert. And this is again Resolution 171. And bless you. And second agenda item is purchase of vehicle for Police Department. Resolution 179. Chief. And Chief, while you're coming up here, I want to thank you and Lieutenant Sorrelli for attending the funeral services for Cora Jigetz today. It was nice to see your support there. Thank you.
It was an honor. Evening, Mayor, members of the council. As you know, I am seeking a third police vehicle to be replaced this year. As previously discussed, over the past numerous years, due to the economic downswing, we have reduced the number of vehicles that we have been purchasing. We historically have reduced or replaced our vehicles at three per year. Over the years, we have reduced that to one a year, which in essence would drive up our vehicle mileage. So that is the reason why I'm seeking three vehicles for this year. Also, as you know, in the beginning of the year, we instituted a vehicle fee for our vehicles that are used on outside jobs, which will alleviate some of the funding necessity for our municipal budget. So that is the reason why I am seeking a third vehicle for this year.
And this is part of the original budget, and this is just the appropriation from operating. Correct? Is this the...
No, capital.
Is this capital? I'm sorry. I apologize. There is... Any council discussion or questions?
You're buying this from a dealer in Pennsylvania because it's cheaper than the Co-op?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Alright, again, Resolution 179. Thank you, Chief. And on to the third item, technology update, and a resolution that's related to this. Jim.
I'm asking for permission to buy new software for our email system. This has been budgeted for, this will be coming out of my operating budget. As you may remember, one of the first things I did when I was hired seven years ago was I installed a new email system. That system now is seven years old, and it is more than time to seriously consider replacing it. It's very long in the tooth. We have... Our needs have expanded beyond its capacity. This has resulted in a number of incidents where the mail system simply stopped working until we were able to delete mail and clean up the databases. The newer version of mail software has much more capacity, much more flexibility associated with the storage used by the mail server, and is going to serve the Borough much better. I had been asked historically why we aren't considering cloud-based email. There are two primary points. First and foremost, we are not permitted to store Police Department email in the cloud. In the coming months or years, there may be a cloud-based solution that is acceptable to the criminal justice... Oh, I'm so sorry. Information Services, SIGES. But at present... Information services, SIGIS, uh, but at present, it just doesn't, uh, exist. Secondly, cost feasibility. At present, uh, Microsoft is offering a special price for govern, government customers of seven dollars per user per month, which probably sounds reasonable, uh, but if you multiply out the number of email accounts we're currently serving, given the committee members and, um, volunteers, interns that all have email accounts, that would work out to roughly twenty-five thousand dollars a year. Um, our current email system, when you divide out by the number of years of total purchase price, has cost us less than seven thousand dollars. So I think that, um, a cloud-based, uh, solution for Madison would be cost-infeasible. That speaks directly to the reasons why I'd like to seek replacing, uh, well, at this point, purchasing the licenses for the software. We're buying through the, um, New Jersey State contract. This is a contract negotiated between the state of New Jersey and Microsoft, so we cannot access this, these licenses any cheaper. Uh, schools could, but we're not an educational institution. I was also asked to speak to two other matters. First and foremost, spam filtration. Um, we have had a Barracuda spam filter in place, uh, for roughly ten years now, and the recurring annual cost associated with that device is roughly seven hundred and sixty dollars. Um, I've done some research. I have found that there's the current leader of the pack for spam filtering and other forms of email security would be Proofpoint, and for under five hundred users, that would cost us sixteen thousand dollars a year. Now, that would allow us to have up to five hundred users, that dollar amount, um, and we could support up to five hundred, uh, domains if we wanted. So potentially, we could utilize this as a shared services opportunity and host other municipalities email. That's far outside of tonight's conversation, but I just wanted to bring up the point. I will continue researching spam filtration, but nothing's perfect, and to improve the quality of our spam filtration is going to cost more than we're currently spending. I also understand there's interest in, um, Wi-Fi here in Hartley Dodge. I've secured hardware, we've mounted a pair of wireless access points, and should have that operational, um, later this week. Are there any questions, please?
Questions from the, uh, council? Pat?
Um, well, actually, I think, Jim, thank you. You answered all my questions via email in the last couple of days. Uh, the one thing I would ask you to consider is if we do need to do a significant hardware refresh, or if we want to look at, um, you were talking at one point about building a fully redundant configuration here. I think at that point, we do go back and look at a cloud-based solution, because you would get all that built into the per-month fee, um, and you wouldn't have to manage it anymore. But yet, the current analysis, uh, does make sense for what we're doing at this point.
Ben? Will this have any impact on the interface for email, or remain the same?
Yes. This will, uh, bring us a new web interface. It'll also bring us better compatibility. We should have much better results for people using Macintosh computers.
I'll look forward to that.
And, um, I just want to mention that, um, the whole notion of locational redundancy actually grew out of a conversation I had with Mr. Landrigan last year following, um, Hurricane Sandy, when he expressed an interest in my, uh, pursuing the pricing to answer what it would cost to have true locational, uh, redundancy. So that in the event, all the, um, networking hardware, you know, specific building, specifically the public safety building, were knocked out, either through water damage, electrical power loss, utter catastrophe, um, and that's exactly what we're speaking to. I will make presentations, I'll make proposals, I don't seek to make decisions on how much money people spend on this, but I will make every effort to give you the most cost-effective solutions, meeting three varying levels of redundancy.
Yeah, that was the other comment I had, which I don't know if we're going to get into tonight. I think if you're going to go in that direction, you really need to do first a business continuity plan for all the applications that we have, and see really where email ranks in the hierarchy of needs in terms of what we need better redundancy on, because we, we, you host a lot of different applications. I'm not sure where email fits into that pecking order. Um, and also, you need to kind of look at how critical is it to a variety of needs? I'm sure for Bob's sake, it's probably pretty important, but the question is, do you need to build a full system for that? And given the, the problems we had last year, a redundant system wouldn't have bought us much, because the, we had bigger issues with power to people, and, and people just weren't getting communications at all.
I was thinking more in terms of critical records, you know.
Critical, sorry?
Critical records.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, where, where are they backed up? Should something happen like another?
Are they sort of email or file server, or?
Well, that's, that was what I wanted Jim to look at.
Okay.
Well, in short, one of the advantages we have is a lot of fiber in town. My, my intention is to basically have storage in two buildings in Hartley Dodge as well as public safety. Um, these, these can be mirrored, because the network speeds we can operate between the two buildings.
I guess the other question, as you talk about a shared service, how disconnected logically is our network from the Board of Eds? Because again, they, you know, you may want to do something with them and share a mail service and share the redundant mail service and, and split the cost of that.
Ironically, we did look into that, um, some years ago, and the school district had no interest in sharing, uh, email hardware, uh, with the borough.
Oh, they didn't ask me about that.
But, uh, yeah, that's, that's something, that has been built in from the beginning. In fact, if Kirkus Law was here this evening, um, one of the original things Rosenet offered was email for the school district, and they said, no, thank you at that time. So that's still an open door. Love to revisit it.
Shared services. I think, I think if you get to that point, we should go back and have that conversation through shared services, because they probably need it as badly as we do.
We've certainly confirmed that the software I'm asking to buy will support multiple domains. The hardware I'm looking to secure will support multiple domains as well as, um, everything being virtualized. So my fantasy for redundancy is not only have the mail server, but all of our significant non-police application servers, all of them. So the whole thing will operate with, if we go all the way with the loss of one building.
Again, I would strongly suggest you do a continuity plan first to see how much of that you really need redundant, because I'm not sure if many of our departments need, you know, one hour or even a one-day turnaround in case we lost, um, a system. And it gets to be very expensive, both from a standpoint of purchasing it, implementing it, maintaining it, failing over, failing back. Um, most, most people find out that they can fail over, but failing back is another story.
So, couple of, uh, comments and a question. One, the, uh, your discussion around the cost of the cloud-based, um, just to give some background on that, I know a neighboring town did shift from off, to Office, uh, three sixty-five, which, um, I have as my work, and I'm a fan of it, but one of the decisions they made was not to put their volunteers on it. So that means they're exposing their volunteers to using their home email account or creating an independent account, which is more difficult. So, um, those are decisions we have to make, and I think it is a priority to keep our volunteer, giving them the opportunity to keep their emails separate. Um, would this, uh, system have the ability to, uh, send texts out through?
Yes.
Okay.
That, we won't lose that.
Okay. And, uh, the, uh, web interface upgrade, that's a, a big, big thing, and my last point, which I probably should skip anyway, but trying to get the educational discount, I'm learning something new every day on the job here, so I think it should be an educational institute. Anyway, sorry, that was just a try. Anyway, any, any other discussion? All right, we have, uh, Resolution one seventy-four, which is on the consent agenda. Thank you, Jim. All right, we have, due to the short time in between our last meeting, which was on a Wednesday, in this meeting, there are no ordinances for hearing, but we will have quite a few at our next meeting. And so now we move on to item fifteen on the agenda, which is invitation for discussion, number two, and this is when you may step up and comment on anything you feel appropriate to share with the council or the people in the audience. So please step up to the lectern, state your name, your address, and please, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting. And introduction of ordinances.
Uh, the ordinance scheduled for first reading has a hearing date set for Monday, June the twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen. We published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the Bulletin Board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinance for the first reading and ask the Borough Clerk to read said ordinance by title.
Ordinance thirty-nine, two thousand and fourteen is an ordinance of the borough of Madison amending ordinance ten, two thousand and fourteen concerning section one eighty-five dash twenty-nine of the Borough Code to prohibit parking on the south side of Burnett Road during school and sporting events at Madison High School.
Mayor, I move ordinance thirty-nine dash twenty-fourteen.
I second it. And, uh, council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
Okay. Consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolution R one sixty-nine dash two thousand and fourteen through R one eighty-six dash two thousand and fourteen.
Second motion? Council discussion, or any that need to be pulled?
I just will abstain from R one seventy-three and one eighty-four.
Connection to the Presbyterian Church.
Yeah, I have the connection to the Presbyterian Church, and I'm on the Board of the Y.
Any, anyone else? Okay. Roll call, vote?
Okay. Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
There is no unfinished business? Approval vouchers?
Public safety, fifteen thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and eleven cents. Health and public assistance, two thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars twenty-four cents. Public works and engineering, one hundred and sixty thousand two hundred and ten dollars twenty cents. Community affairs, eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. Finance and Borough Clerk, three million six hundred and nineteen thousand seven hundred and seven dollars and, uh, seven hundred and seven dollars and eighty-four cents. And utilities, seventy-six thousand five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. The total's three million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-five cents.
Mayor, I move the approval of the vouchers.
Second. Discussion. Roll call, vote?
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ms. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Wolkowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Rowe?
Yes.
New business, just one thing I forgot to mention in my comments, that I want to congratulate Bob Landrigan for being awarded a Paul Harris Fellow from the Madison Rotary Club for your service to the community. Thank you so much for what you do.
And with that, I move that we adjourn.
We've got, got to witness a very quick meeting tonight. Bob, if you can sign the, uh...
Yes, I can.
Yeah, this is one I could have done, didn't you? You might want to talk to him about right now.
Have a conversation.